Okay, uh, we'll call the call of town household. Meeting order is Thursday, February twenty, twenty twenty-five at six thirty-one. Um, first is the pledge allegiance. Uh, next rule call.
Councilmember Scott Dick.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Miller.
Here.
Councilmember David Rudd.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Rex Waters, the third.
Here.
Councilmember Andy Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Okay, uh, next is the approval of the consent agenda. Were any questions? Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda. Paul second, Dave's motion.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Uh, next we have the third treasury report.
So everyone has their monthly financials you receive. And the annual financial report will be going in the gateway. So I just need, um, which is that is the state board account, the annual financial report. So it's like forty, forty-three pages long. So it's gonna be going in gateway, um, either like copies if you'd like to have separate copies of it. Um, it was in the Dropbox, but if you want separate copies, we'll give them to you. I just have one more number to get on a grant number, the federal, and then everything. Also, the debt report is in, so that is good too. Um, we pretty much will taking care of all of those reports now as of today. So that's good, and we have one more, um, disbursement claim that we need to run through this evening. We just received the actual SRF disbursement request form today, but it just goes to Mitchell and Stark, so it was not on the agenda. This is one that has been, um, submitted by MS consultants. They have approved it, that Mitchell and Stark has done the work, and this is on the wastewater project. And this amount is seven hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. So of the project, so we would need a motion to approve this, it's request number twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay.
Thank you, thank you, and let's see. I believe that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is the monthly department reports, sort of fire department.
Then it's, well, I do always have a person. Hello, um. First off, run stats for this year, around a hundred and thirty-two runs as of right now. Um, a hundred and fourteen of those are EMS. And we have forty-three calls that have no response, which is like thirty-two percent, um, for just the town of Nashville. We're at sixty-one runs, I don't have the breakdown. Um, so just under half for, and town almost everything. Any questions over runs, that side of things? Second side is, we got the sign design from Chris for Creekside. And we got his quote, I believe you all have a copy of the sign, copy of the quote. The sign got approved at the meeting on Tuesday. And the quote is for a total of three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. I didn't realize until we started doing the sign thing that Creekside might have one of the largest signs in the county. And it's a big, beautiful steel structure that they put up to advertise their business, and now I need to. Find a way to cover that up, so, um, Chris has cut us a pretty major break, uh, from his normal pricing. And we're looking for combinations to help with the sign, um, I pledged some money. And we've had at least one other person pledge some money, we're looking for anybody that's willing to help get the sign up. Um, when we talked about it in the meeting, we. We were looking at what money we could spend, and we have three people that need gear, we could afford gear for one of them, so. We also have to find funding for two more sorts of gear, but yeah, we're working on that through different meetings that can actually, you know. Fund more public safety related stuff, but we need help with sign, if anybody knows someone. Um, there's a good resource, I'm also gonna start a London campaign on Facebook to try and get this thing paid for. Obviously, the sooner the better, the whole reason for the sign is, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but Creekside out there, we own the whole complex. Uh, it looks pretty rough, and that's because we do a lot of trainings out there, we've had some big state trainings and things like that, we've had the National Guard come in. But people often call during our trainings, they can't do something wrong, even though there's a fire truck sitting out there. Or they call and they're like, hey, there's all these abandoned buildings. We're in the process of trying to convert it more to like a stable training center, so we just want people to be aware of what's out there and. Stop thinking that it's just some abandoned property. Any questions?
Sure, I'm making a motion to pay for it.
Anybody have any questions about that?
Brenda's working on that, thank you.
Anybody have any, any opposition to that?
Capital Development Fund.
How soon can you get it out?
Uh, Chris wants to do it right away, he's got, he's gotten pretty far into the project, so he thinks he can have it up by the end of this time of.
I'll second the motion. We paid for it out of the CCP fund. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay.
Thank you guys, that's wonderful, I did not know that that was even possible. Any other questions from anybody else? All right, well, my day's made.
I've been working with them for like, tell all be wound.
It's been a while.
It'll be nice to see it up.
Yeah. We, we agree.
Yeah. Good, um, police department.
Uh, as far as our road sheet goes, we responded since the last council meeting, uh, well, from the last council meeting till noon today. To four hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. Which I think is probably about our normal now that we're staffed and everybody's, um, up there doing one thing that I think is. Noteworthy is, even with all the snow events that we had, um, we actually only ended up doing a pretty small amount of actual crashes. We ended up pushing a lot of people out of snowbanks and out of ditches and things like that, but as far as actual state crash reports, they were pretty minimal, under ten. So I think that's pretty, that's a testament to how, how well everybody took care of our streets during all the snow events. I mean, they were absolutely amazing once again for every snow event, so. Other than that, I don't think we have anything, uh, it's just a pretty standard month, and I'm pretty pleased with how, how everybody responded from the department, I've been. For the first time since I've been here, it seems kind of a deep breath, and as I review every one of these that come through, I'm pretty satisfied that. We're doing a good job. And so that makes me feel better, and that lets me rest easier at night. Um, also from the police department, to keep you updated, our, on our police radio, and I don't, I know that there's been some discussion about the radio stuff. Uh, and for those of you guys who don't know, in a brief overview, at the police department, we have typically two radios, we have our portable radios, which we carry on our sides, and we have our mobiles. Both of the radios that we have. Are about to go offline with the next state upgrade, they're not upgradable anymore. So at bare minimum, we have to find a way to purchase new portable radios, and they are roughly three thousand dollars apiece. And so to update the department, we're gonna have to come up with about thirty thousand dollars just to be able to talk to the dispatch center, and there's a long. History that I'm still in the process of trying to figure out about how we came to this decision, because the current portable radio that I have. Was last, uh, was last supported by the manufacturer in twenty eighteen. So it's been a long time, out of service and dangerous, but, uh, there again, to be able to speed on the finances of that, we've got a couple of. Options for grants that we're gonna be applying for, and we're gonna see what we can do to. Be able to get some of that funding, but we have to come up with that, I think the tender date for that phase three upgrade from the state where these coming off the wall is. January first of twenty twenty-six, so we're, it's not a, it's not an imminent deadline, but it's coming up on us. And then, uh, lastly, uh, the holiday pay amendment, and I think you've got all of that in your packets. When I made the proposal for the leave policy change, um, in the holiday pay, we agreed to pay the police officers that worked on the holidays double time. And it wasn't until after the fact, we did our first time sheets and I spoke to Brenda. Some of the people opted to wanna try to put that double time into their accrued bank or their, what do we call it?
Comp time.
Comp time bank, uh, and Brenda said that needed to be specifically voted on by the council to allow for it to be paid or. To put it to the accrued bank, comp time.
That's so far the news was that the MZR is already, that's how it's set up.
Right, I think, I think all of them leave it set up.
But for audit, this is, and everything needs to be spelled out, they're allowed to do that.
So just, so basically, instead of using their vacation time and just being paid for it instead.
No, that's not that, so, so, um, in the leave policy, if, if one of the police officers works on a holiday. Then they could get double time pay for that. Some of the police officers don't wanna take the pay, they would rather take the day back to use it another time.
Right, okay.
So that, so what we can't, if, unless we have that specifically voted on by the council, they will be forced to take the double time pay, and they couldn't. Instead of taking, working the day and then taking the holiday at a later time.
So either or.
They would, they, they would rather have, it would be their option, but, but the younger people here would rather have the day off later. Than have the pay, or it seems to be that's the trend, I don't, I shouldn't specify the younger people, but the newest two police officers have asked about doing that.
Make a motion. That we allow that comp time as a substitution if they opt for it.
I'll second that motion.
Anybody, any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody has any questions, I mean?
Uh, next we have town administration.
Um, in your package, you'll have a right-of-way permit for United Methodist Church, or the village, um. Where their ball fair that they do every year. Um, what will happen is on Thursday, October second, after nine P M. In the same area that they've always had it, we'll block off the parking, so on Friday, they can do their unloading. And setting up, and then Saturday morning, we'll put, um, that area will be blocked off for three days. And I believe it goes from eight to five.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Uh, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay.
You should also have in your packet the twenty twenty-five service bit recommendations. These are, um, a couple things we used throughout the years for certain items. You want me to read them all?
You want that on, not allowed for record? Sure.
Air conditioning and heating repair, we have maintenance for refrigeration, heating and air conditioning, and Snyder HVAC. Automotive repair was brown county tire, building repair, wall construction. Electrical repair, wheeler electric, heavy equipment repair, best equipment. Pest control, birds termite pest control. Plumbing repair, boiler's plumbing, septic and waste, wastewater hall is reseptic. Snow removal, retracting, street and curb painting, AAA striking. Tree maintenance, vertical landscaping, water pump and booster station repair, B B C pump. And wastewater pump and lift station repair. B B C pumps, annual note bits received for material hauling, sidewalk repair, or storm drain repair. And that's all I have.
Uh, others, oh, okay, oh, sorry. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll make that one.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Great. Hang on, uh, the town attorney report.
I don't really have anything to add to, you know, I have a little discussing inside the session.
Got it, town manager report.
Dave, you wanna talk about real inventory?
No. About.
About asking, changing the in that map.
Oh, yeah, we need, we're getting paid for. Stuff we really don't own. Which is from the back of the fire station, down the hill, around all the way to. One thirty-five, forty-six. We don't want. We need to change where it would stay.
Okay.
I just wanted to. Know in a public meeting that that's what y'all want me to do. It's just some many paperwork ruins. Pretty straightforward.
It's all screwed.
Okay, so. Um, sure.
I'll make the motion.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, what? Updated on a comprehensive plan, there is a public workshop that's gonna happen Monday. February twenty-four, five-thirty to seven-thirty at the library, you wanna come at five-thirty. Cause it's a, it's a whole experience, um, and you'll be looking at the division for Nashville the next twenty years. And looking at the, uh, the maps about like, where would you wanna see businesses in the future? Where would you like to see housing, that kind of thing, so if everybody could come and at least bring three people with them, that would be amazing. Um, because I want a lot of input from the community, it doesn't need to be from me, it needs to be from the people that live here, who are gonna raise families here. So there's that, and, um, I just learned yesterday that, um. That we've been chosen for, uh. For IU's rural placemaking studio. Uh, what IU is doing is they're, uh, connecting with, uh, a few. Uh, rural communities within ninety miles of IU, and, uh, the IU students that are working in, um. The School of Art, Architecture and Design, uh, will come and work with these communities that maybe have an idea, hey, we think we might. Wanna do this in our community, so there was a small group of people that expressed interest. We got together, we made an amazing application, and they said, you guys are the chosen ones, so, um. It's gonna be like June until the students get here and stuff like that, um, but we will have public input for people being a part of that as well. It's only a planning, planning thing, it's, no money's involved in it, it's just some students getting, um. The experience firsthand, and so I, I, I think it's. I'm so excited, anything I get for free, I'm very happy, so, uh, so that, that'll be coming down the bike. I, I hope you got anything else.
Thank you, um, next is old business. Consider ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero two, which in ordinance provide for control of streets, alleys and sidewalks of the town of Nashville, Indiana. And then the ordinance nineteen ninety-three dash zero two. We're gonna have to answer. The new ordinance. Anything, any questions on it?
I'd like to make a motion, had first reading ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five zero two.
Sorry, we're gonna ask for that with Tom.
Uh, what? But we, we normally don't for, unless I'm missing.
Especially the first.
The first reading, yeah. Okay, we'll do that. So Dave made that, Dave made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash O two. An ordinance to provide for control of streets, alleys and sidewalks in the town of Nashville, Indiana. Amendment ordinance nineteen ninety-three dash two.
Just a reading.
If you want, if you can have a motion, please extend the rules and have a second reading.
Thanks. I don't have my handy manual instructions in front of me.
All right, make a motion, extend the rules, we have second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O two.
Second motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. All right, uh.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash O two, an ordinance to provide for control of streets, alleys and sidewalks. For the town of Nashville, Indiana, pending ordinance number nineteen ninety-three dash two.
Yeah. Now, if you have something to say.
Okay, sure, um, I had sent an email to all of you, Lucy, Sammy, Juan, too, about, it looks like the, um. Where the application for the permit there.
Sorry, real quick, can you say your, for the record, can you say your name?
I'm sorry, I should handle.
Thank you.
I just wanted to draw, I sent an email, uh. On your attention to what looked to me like more strict. Um, mandatory conditions that are included in the application. That are more restrictive than what the actual ordinance is. So I don't know whether, I don't have any copies, I'm sorry, I have to, so I don't know whether that got looked at or given in detention. And then the other, the other thing is, um, in the ordinance under section one, number two. With, um, the period of time seen fifteen minutes, for an extraction, retire the permit. Um, for example, Lance, you have a restaurant, and I would imagine you get deliveries from large trucks occasionally. And they no doubt are parking in the alley or in the street while those deliveries are being made. So if, if it takes more than fifteen minutes from start to finish, from when they pull in, park and. Offload and you check the inventory against the invoice, and they're shoving their, they're looking back in the truck and they're on their way. If that's more than fifteen minutes, are you prepared to, to apply for a twenty-five dollar permit for every time that happens? And there's, there's also maybe some consideration that should be given based on the language here about how this might. Things like maintenance on a building, like washing windows, and you have a ladder on the side of. Painting building, power washing building, you know, just. And, you know, if you're gonna treat everyone fairly, you're gonna have to. Have to do that or, or fix the language here so that it's not overly burdensome for. People that would look after it.
It does say you can obtain a town administration permit or, and things like this, I mean. I try not to bark in the alleys, there's a load insurance around town, but. I mean, I. I think there's an element of common sense that comes with that, you know.
There, there should be, but.
Well, I mean, you're, you're not, the police aren't taking somebody for going sixty and fifty-five, it's, it's for somebody that's been there for hours and hours that. I think this would be applied to, I can't imagine. Sandy out there with a stopwatch and going, we've been here sixteen minutes, you know. And that's just the way I see it. Well, when should that twenty-five dollar permit be required? And in the common sense, that's. I would say we'd have to be some sort of construction. Issue. Maybe qualify. Damn on this, it, it seems unfortunate to have. An ordinance in place that we all say, God, we'll just ignore that generally.
So. The language, the majority of the language in here comes from nineteen ninety-three that I didn't change.
Okay.
Just left that alone.
Sure.
The, the intent is not to, um. Try to make money off of this. It's, it's more like, if you're gonna put a roof, a new roof on your building downtown, and you have to block the sidewalk, then it's an issue.
Maybe it's the fifteen minutes.
Again. I, I think, I think we're making some mountains out of molehills here, um. The, the, the whole reason why this came about is, we had, um, a. Fiber company come in, and we had some issues with them, and so we were looking at our extremely outdated ordinance. They needed to get up to today's times.
Sure.
Um, mostly to protect the town, because of that installation, there was a lot of issues that would have been covered by this. It would have covered us, we would have been more knowledgeable with what they were doing, and so that's the whole. Presbytery state. Something I'm concerned with this is that. Going down the road, there might be, and a town administrator is not as reasonable as Sandy Jones, but doesn't like. A particular person and would use this to intimidate them. Um, and force them to have to provide a T C P along with the twenty-five dollar application and just. You know, could potentially be really rough on some of you.
So what concrete would you propose?
Well, if this, if this is only going to apply to construction. And not routine maintenance or deliveries or something like that, maybe that could be added to this section.
But how long could somebody block an alleyway for their deliveries?
A good, a good question to elaborate on.
I think it encourages bad behavior to go much longer than fifteen minutes, because, I mean, people do it all the time. And that can create an issue, you know, getting through. Um, I mean, that, the alley, you were brought up my alley and my restaurant, it's, it's blocked all the time. Uh, for the playhouse, and, you know, to me, if, if somebody's dropping something off, it doesn't bother me a bit. You know, sometimes I have to block it for fifteen, twenty minutes to get the thing out of there, if somebody came by and said, hey. You can't block it for any longer, I'd be like, I'm so sorry, I definitely moved along, like, like I said, I think there's an element. Of common sense to a lot of these things and nuance, um, but if somebody set up. A ladder there and was, you know, painting mural on the back of the playhouse. Or, or doing something else, and they just set up, and were there for more than fifteen, twenty minutes, I mean, they should have it. So I, you know, this would affect, you said it would affect me, I don't really see a big issue with that personally.
And if you're, you know, if you, if we say construction and not routine maintenance, but let's say you're a banker building, you need to. If you're, you know, if you, if we say construction and now we're doing maintenance, but let's say you're in a banker building, you need to obstruct the alley. What, what we're looking for is just, it gives a notice to the town and get a permit so that we know that you're gonna block the alley and then uh, you've got a, uh, need to around something there that, if you're gonna, you know, re-ramp your building, if you got a lift or something, if you need scaffolding, something like that, if, uh, you know, it's up in front of the building, it's gonna shut down a roadway, an alley, or a sidewalk. And not just a routine delivery that you've been doing for the last fifty years, that's not what the intent is, but if you're gonna come in and, uh, you know, put, put in a lateral, a new lateral from our sewer or a water line or, you know, a varied fiber optic line or something, you have to open cut, that's what the ordinance is for. We don't just want random um, cuts in our streets that looks like, you know, Artist Drive and some of the other places and, you know, a lot of people would just have a free range to come in and just cut the whole, cut the whole pair of that.
Yeah, so I, I totally understand. Perhaps something could be added to the, um, the DRC permits for the prison buildings and things like that, like already going block sidewalk. When we get the PCP and a permit. But if you're gonna be washing windows, like, or putting up a, you know, on the side of the hot dog. They might be blocking that sidewalk, and that would then get figured out, or maybe they're gonna have to come in here and.
For something as long as that, it's possible. I think that might be a discretion, town council, but that is the time too, if they feel like, uh.
I would say, yeah, if you have the cones up on either side of your ladder and block the whole thing for hours, then yeah, you should have to get something.
Is the twenty-five dollars to cover administrative fees, is that there, you, is it a penalty?
So, administration fees.
Probably doesn't cover the administration easily, it has everything else. But is it, is this necessary?
Yes.
I mean, the, that level. It's gonna put a whole lot more in. Get it figured out so that we don't bump into something down the road that's, oh, we weren't, we didn't think about that.
I mean, if you're worried, if, if you're, if you're worried about, you know, like you said, fifteen, sixteen, twenty minutes, if someone's gonna, if someone, a town manager after Sandy, I mean, they would have to then do that for every ordinance, the noise ordinance for instance, I mean, there's, it, it would be an exhausting effort for any town manager to sit there and, and nitpick every single ordinance.
With a snow removal, I mean, I, I would think the council would ask the town manager to send a warning or a, can you please do this? And I think that would be a common sense action in any town, that you'd say, hey, we need to clear the snow, I don't think. I can't imagine someone coming and using that against another town person, sounds like a very extreme.
Using several right away permits.
It's a, yeah.
Don't get around there, people who don't realize they can't. I get a phone call, I go down there, I don't know if you all recall the pumpkins that were used to walk out the side of one thirty-five. They came in, they got their right away permit, they removed the pumpkins, they put barricades up, it's done. So.
And, and this is pretty standard in other communities, so we didn't just come up and write this from scratch, I mean, we got something from another community, and I've, I've worked a lot of places that it's much more restrictive, so we've even had to get right away permits for working as a contractor for uh, the town or a government agency, from that government agency, and they hired us. It's, it's pretty common.
Yeah. My name is Jimmy Sultan. Wouldn't a thirty minutes window, um, cover most deliveries? Routine deliveries?
I, I actually just asked Lance that question, since I don't own a business, I don't understand. He said fifteen to maybe twenty is a standard, I mean, thirty minutes, wait, I would, I would say that would be too long in those areas, especially we have a lot of tourists going down those alleyways to try to get through and don't.
So the ten minute mark, the, the driver will need to get back in his vehicle and, and circle around?
Again, you're, you're being extreme. It's, nobody's standing out there with a stopwatch. This is again, a common sense. Wow, nobody's pulling people over for going sixty miles per hour and fifty-five. There's, you know, in it, you, you could say the same thing about any ordinance or any law, anywhere, that it is all gonna be the letter of the law. And it's a, you know, has to be this way. That's just not the case. And if, if, if I had a delivery in my restaurant that took more than fifteen minutes, I would ask the driver to park, see if they could park somewhere else. If they couldn't, I would be out there and I would be vigilant. But this to me, if somebody parked their trip, delivery truck in the alley and went and had lunch, you know? You're saying thirty minutes, they could, they, it's a long time to block the right away, so I, I don't understand the concern with this.
I just wanted to draw your attention, this could be an unintended rule of that.
No, I think if we had a consistent issue where there was a delivery driver always at thirty minutes or thirty-five minutes, then we might have to do something different about that situation, but I think once in a while, it's, sometimes they're maybe a little bit longer and, and that just, that, it just tends to happen, but I don't think it's a commonplace.
And again, I think any officer would say, hey, you've been here too long, can you, can you just move along? I don't think they're gonna.
Well, I think, my, you know, I think ultimately, even if you had aggressive enforcement of any meeting ordinance, the reasonableness of the ordinance comes back to the, you appeal to the very people that vote on the, on the ordinance, so if there were ordinance citations written on that, your appeal would go right back to this board for them to answer the, of, of whether it was reasonable or not.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh two.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those nay. Okay. Uh, next. Thanks, is, uh. The first thing on new business is consider ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh three, which is an ordinance to amend the zoning maps for Nashville at one oh five and one twenty-five South Van Muren. AC Hotels LLC P U D.
Can I explain these real quick?
Please.
Because the title of, of, uh, twenty-two twenty-five dash oh three and oh four both refer to the same addresses, which was very confusing to me as well, so I contacted the planning director. And then so in the body of each of the ordinance, you'll see which, what they refer to. So, oh three refers to AC Hotels LLC, so that's Artist Colony, uh, Inn Restaurant, and then they have a condo across the way there. Then oh four refers to the Artist Colony Condo Owners Association, which has something on both of those addresses as well. So that is why you have two separate ones. And this is the last time that you should have to deal with this P U D. Um, for some reason, the ordinance that was created this, they have to go through the area plan commission, then come before you, then go back to the area plan commission, and then come back to you. I believe that's the last step in the dance. Um, so, and then what that does is it allows them to legally have the P U Ds there that they've kind of been doing anyway, because they thought.
So it's basically the same ordinance, just AC Hotel LLC P U D, and Artist Colony Condo Owners Association. All right. Um, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, are we gonna, does it matter the order we do this, or make a motion of the first reading of ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh three by title only? Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those nay.
Ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh three, and ordinance to amend the zoning maps of the town of Nashville, Brown County, Indiana, to designate P U D to property located at one oh five and one twenty-five South Van Muren Street.
And then. We, no, oh, sorry.
Other rules.
Federal.
I'd like to motion.
Get on the rules and have a second reading, uh, ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh three by title only. I'll take it.
Okay, all in favor say ayes.
Aye.
And, uh, ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash oh three, and ordinance to amend the zoning maps of the town of Nashville, Brown County, Indiana, to designate P U D to property located at one oh five and twenty-five South Van Muren Street for AC Hotels LLC.
Okay.
I'll take a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh three.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 That one's done. Uh, next, uh, is there a motion for ordinance twenty-three dash oh four?
I'll make a motion now of the first reading of ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh four by title only, also.
All in favor say aye.
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 Uh, ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh four, and ordinance to amend zoning maps of the town of Nashville, Brown County, Indiana, to designate P U D to property located at one oh five and one twenty-five South Van Muren Street.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Make a motion to suspend rules. And have a second reading by title only, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Uh, uh, ordinance number twenty-two twenty-five oh four, and ordinance to amend the zoning maps, uh, town of Nashville, Brown County, Indiana, to designate P U D to property located at one oh five and one twenty-five South Van Muren Street, for the Artist Colony Condo Owners Association.
Okay, fair motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two twenty-five dash oh four.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, and then I'll send those back to the planning department, and they can do their next step with that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next we have uh, next we have, uh, Status Utility Service Board Vice President. Regarding the situation, uh. Need to discuss the status of this.
We need a, we need a.
Do we need a regular letter?
Or is that, this is, sorry.
Oh. Uh, there is a letter here, uh, dated February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, it's a memo, Town Council, regarding Campbell. And it says, Dear Town Council members, a couple of weeks ago, I was made aware that one of the members of the National Utility Service Board, also known as the USB, reached out to someone at the Indiana State Revolving Fund, also known as S R F, to discuss the ongoing sewer rehabilitation project. I was not a party to this conversation, but it is my understanding that the USB member Pam Gold asked S R F if they would be able to stop funding of the ongoing sewer rehabilitation project because of a perceived easement issue. Mrs. Gold did not have authorization, direction, or approval from the USB to make this call. Her basis for making the call appears to be related to her personal relationship with the owners of the land in question. This is not the first time that Mrs. Gold's been put in a position where her personal interests or the personal interests of her family are in direct conflict with her role on the USB. She has been asked to recuse herself of discussions relating to properties that her and/or her family members have an interest in. During the February fourteenth regular Monday, monthly meeting of the USB, I asked representatives from MS Consultants to explain the details of the S R F call and asked Mrs. Gold to comment. A transcript of the discussion should be available for you to review. I asked Mrs. Gold to resign, but she refused. Upon her refusal, I made a proper motion to recommend that she be removed by Town Council from the position. The motion was properly seconded and voted in favor of, by all four of the other USB members. Mrs. Gold did not vote. The USB respectfully asks the Town Council to remove Pam Gold from her position on the USB immediately. Pam Gold has done an amazing job in the USB, and we have worked well together for the past few years. It is unfortunate that her personal interests in these matters have made it impossible for her to continue her role in the USB. And this is from Alan Brown, who's the president of the Nashville Insurance Service Board. This is what we have to discuss, um. I'll open this up. Alan, I'll start with you, can you name?
Uh, I don't, I don't have, answer any questions, but.
Okay, uh, Pam, you have anything that you would like to?
Yes, I do. Yeah, Pam Gold, okay.
Uh, it's five minutes.
All right. Um, it's been a pretty big challenge. And, um, I wrestled with this all last weekend, it was the first time this week. I was on a Zoom call yesterday morning, and somebody shared that seemed incredibly relevant to this situation, and I'd like to share with you. This was written several thousand, over two thousand years ago by King David. I am passionately in love with God because he listens to me. He hears my prayers and answers them. As long as I live, I'll keep praying to him, for he stoops down to listen to my heart's cry. Shame that once stared me in the face, and I was close to slipping into its dark shadows. I was terrified, and it overcome the sorrow. I cried out to the Lord, God, come, save me. He was so kind, so gracious to me. Because of his passion toward me, he made everything right and restored me. So I learned from my experience that God protects the vulnerable. Mine was broken and brought up low, but he answered me and came to my rescue. Now I can say to myself and to all, relax and rest. Be confident and serene, for the Lord rewards fully those who simply trust in him. God has rescued my soul from fear and dried my eyes with tears. He kept my feet firmly on his path and strengthened me so that I may please him and walk before him with this fearless faith. And when it seems I'm surrounded by many liars and my own fears, and though I'm hurting and I'm suffering and traumatized, I still say, I still stay faithful to God, hence the fearless faith. My Psalm one sixteen, verses one to eleven, Passion Translation. So this is my statement of faith, I will be then and again, whether it's soon or whether it's anytime. It's up to God about when. I, if you care to, no one of you ever reached out to me personally to get the other side of the story. This is based on hearsay. There are more than one side to every story. Um, that being said, and if you should to, so choose to go ahead with this tonight, then, and I fully expect that it is your intent to follow the recommendation of the Town and Public of the USB. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for the pleasure of serving our community in this way. When I started in twenty-twenty, we had, um, it was a disaster, that wastewater treatment plant. I mean, we went from unopened letters from item to an eighteen-hundred-seven million dollar wastewater treatment plant upgrade with a whole lot of new processes and systems in place to keep it running well. I can say that I'm, I'm fairly proud of, of what USB have done in the last forty years to snap it from that into the condition it is today. And it's been my pleasure to have been able to, have been afforded the opportunity to help with that. Um, that being said, if you choose to have me removed this evening, I will most happily cast long a huge body of paper who will organize to my whoever it is that is selected by me. But I would also like to draw your attention to a copy of, I would also like to draw your attention to the ordinance twenty-two twenty dash oh five that created the USB. And page two, section C, I believe it is, page following. The Nashville Town Council may remove any member before by a two, three majority vote. So apparently this was copied and pasted from a something that had a three-member board and a five-member board. So it's by two, three majority vote by the Town Council after a public hearing and a finding that the removal of a board member is in the best interest of ten of you. The public hearing shall be posted twice, not less than seven days apart, the last posting being ten days before the date set for the public hearing. So it's not been even seven days since the vote was. So it's not been even seven days since the vote was taken, so. It'd be a procedural matter at this point, and I would be delighted to have a couple of public hearings.
We have two public hearings or just one?
It is one, but it has to be posted twice, you know that. Well, because, because you might wanna take a look at it, the posting has a ten day requirement.
The second one.
The public hearing shall be posted, not less than seven days apart. The last posting being ten days before the date set for the public hearing.
Right.
So are you considering this public hearing number one?
No, we would have a public hearing based on this, uh that would be set at a later date. This is just for us to decide it, right, is that right? Should we vote on, should we vote to move forward with that, then there would be a public hearing.
The first public.
I'd also be more than happy to speak with any of you or all of you during the executive session, which would have been a great action. That for the U S B have taken. So it's up to you guys to decide if you want to. Proceed with. Would this pass us or not?
We'd imagine we have a public hearing. To continue the process of um. As Vice President. Yeah, we'll make that motion. We should have a public hearing.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those say aye. Okay, uh we'll get that information, Pam, and we will uh get that provided and posted out.
Out there in the future enough to have those two different.
Yeah.
Notifications.
Yeah, there'll be a one notice and um. Not less than seven days apart, and the last posting being ten days, as Pam said, before the date set for the public hearing.
Seventeen days from now, so soon as it could be.
That correct, seventeen?
Only leading that right now. I will make sure whatever, whatever times you tell me to post, that we will make sure that that's out. And that Pam knows that day as well.
Right.
Got it. Okay. Alright, um. We're on public comments. Anybody have any public comments? Okay, um, any moral business come for the council, do you guys, do they have anything? Alright.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to adjourn. Alright, creating adjournment, thank you very much, uh twenty twenty four.